This time we'll go ahead and call our work session for September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, to order. And I'd like to ask everyone, please, for silence, or turn off their cell phones if you would please, and then join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Okay, we have three different timed items, starting with our nine o'clock. And that will be county property purchase request from the Forty Second Group, Lauren Card.
Yeah, here.
Could you please come up? Oh, I'm sorry, before you start, Denise, you want to share our addition?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you have an addition of the Veterans Transportation Grant? That's a man who has plans.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
Do I just start off with, say, that, uh...
Oh, okay.
Commissioner, meeting, working session.
Okay, and yeah, just share with us, just share with us what you'd like.
Okay, I'll take about five minutes.
We'll take information today and then tomorrow when we have a regular meeting, that's when we may announce.
So after my opening session, do we do back and forth question answered?
We sure can, if that's appropriate, yeah. This work session, that's what it's designed for, is to get as much information out there and have a good, open discussion about different items, so.
Okay, excellent, okay. Took a few notes, made a few notes, so thank you for inviting me this morning to this discussion. I think it'll be productive for everybody, including the community. Back in June, on behalf of my company, I submitted a proposal to buy an adjacent two-acre parcel. Would you put them down in your hands? I don't know if we want to talk about the terms of it. We probably internalize those terms for a while, but, um...
It was an option.
It was an option, which, we're not married to that structure, if it's approved, but, um, we're open to other approaches, I'm just our first approach. Is it the timing of the part of the land?
Well, just would always like to make sure that the audience on the camera and in the thing, just give us a quick brief of what that proposed option was.
Okay, good idea. So the land is approximately two-acre parcel next to our current parcel that we own in Lakeview, Oregon, which is at twelve fifty South Twelfth Street. We, um, I believe the parcel is assessed at thirty-five thousand. I'm not sure if that reflects the county's estimate of market value, or what the formula is, or how that was calculated. So what we did, based on what we see as the timing of potentially building out that property, is we proposed an option structure, and the option structure is this. We would pay fifty thousand for the property, we would pay five thousand for the option, and the option would be for two years. So if we exercised it, excuse me, within two years, that'd be fifty-five thousand consideration to the county versus the fifty-five thousand, um, assessment. And then I also put in there, which is always negotiable, in case we were delayed, for whatever reason, there's always, you know, finishing our current Phase One and Phase Two, getting approvals, building contractors, you never know how things work out. I also put in a kind of an option extension for another year, and the consideration for that would be three thousand dollars. So all in, if we ended up exercising this option in year three, I think the total consideration would be fifty-eight thousand dollars. In summary, I think that's it. There's some stuff about maintenance and, you know, which I don't quite remember, but... Any more details on that, is that okay?
No, but just for clarity, you're not, you're not suggesting that the company would pay fifty thousand dollars and then a five thousand dollar to your option?
Yes, so how is, how the option is structured is classic natural purchase option, super simple. Um, I, we write a check, we come up with an option agreement, and we write a check of five thousand to the county, and that's just to enter into the option, doesn't count towards purchase price.
Right.
And then if we say, yeah, we're going to buy the land, which one's likely, well, we would write another check for fifty thou, or fifty thousand, you know, within the first two years. So that would be totaled fifty-five, if we exercised it within twenty-four months of the date of the option. So, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so maybe Darwin can clarify. This piece of property is in the town, city limits, or outside?
It is in Lake County, if I'm accurate.
It's Lake County property, but it's annexed into the city.
It's in the town.
It's already annexed.
It's county property.
But it's already annexed into the city, okay. Okay, there was some confusion on that a few months back, I wasn't quite sure.
No, Darwin, I'd love to have.
Okay, good, very good. Also, yes, already, you may not have had time, but I got it at the last minute also. I was working with the Employment Department of the State of Oregon to figure out the economic impact of our current development efforts. And for simplicity, we are breaking projects into phases. So for our discussion purposes, let's say there's Phase One, there's Phase Two, and there's Phase Three. And Phase One and Two will take place on the current parcel that we currently own. And this actually, Phase One is almost done, it's a couple of weeks away from initial phase one. Phase Two will happen on the same parcel, we'll duplicate the number of greenhouses, and then, and we'll add people, let's put that way, to the Phase One project. So Phase One and Two combined, the economic impact is about thirty direct jobs, which are not laborer jobs, and I'd like to get into that if we have time, what kind of jobs we could hire. And also six indirect jobs. And those six indirect jobs are a reflection of kind of the multiplier effect when our employees go out, spend money in the community. They create jobs in the stores, and, you know, and such, and, you know, down from, you know, so total, total all-in, estimated about thirty-six jobs for Phase One and Two combined. That's going to happen, because we're well on our way. We've raised capital, two more rounds of capital in the last six months, um, put into Phase One and Two. So we are pretty well capitalized, with a lot of momentum going. So that economic impact of jobs will help. Now, the state of Oregon estimates, all in, about three point eight million economic impact of Phase One and Two. There's a couple hundred thousand, which is a one-time effect for contractor employees, who are there for just months and then they leave. But about ninety percent of that three point eight million is annual, I mean, every year.
Off of this particular?
Off of this current Phase One and Two, which we're doing, we own. So that'll always happen, regardless of the outcome of this, of this decision. And that's, and that goes on every year, so let's call it three point six million every year, which I think is a great thing. Because the state of Oregon will not do economic impact on high and skywashed projects, I've extrapolated a little bit, I took some liberties. So Phase Three will happen on a parcel under discussion today. And basically what Phase Three will be is a duplicate of Phase One and Two, without the work that went into Blue Warehouse that you see. There's a ton of work going inside there, but we don't need to duplicate that for Phase Three. So it makes a little more streamlined for us.
Inside the structure of the facility, is it...
Thirteen thousand foot blue bill, yeah.
And so processing and property that you require is for growing?
Right, so Phase Three would be mostly growing. Um, might be some ancillary stuff stored and things like that for equipment, but mostly growing. And what happens in the warehouse, we have shipping containers, and they invite everybody to come out and take a look. And the audience here today is Craig Compton, who's our Vice President, General Manager of the whole complex. So if you wanted to get in there, there's regulations on inspections, he knows of all, he can get you in there and even look around. But inside, there is nine shipping containers, all dedicated to specific functions, of drawing, security. They all have air conditioning, et cetera, et cetera. It's very nice, we're putting up firewalls inside. But that project does not get duplicated in Phase Three. So it's much simpler for Phase Three for us, it's just put a greenhouse and grow, and then move to Blue Warehouse, right? So what Phase Three will do is add, in my estimate, at least twenty to twenty-five more direct jobs. And I don't know how many indirect, but if you're using the thought that the jobs are the same, the work is the same, the processes are the same, um, it's almost just a linear effect.
Are those seasonal jobs, or are they year-round?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll address that. I think it's an important conversation to have about the composition of the workforce and the types of jobs, which, which is a good discussion. So I, you know, my estimate, if we're at three point eight million, Phase One and Two going to happen, I think a very fair number, might even be on the low side, but I'd rather be conservative, is to say that it's going to be seven million plus annually, including Phase One, Two, and now Phase Three. So I'll call another three million, something like that, three and a half million, extra for Phase Three. Any questions on that?
On the three point eight million, whatever, the direct effect to the community would be jobs and their expenditure, but not the three point eight, would be that?
No, no, their jobs create three point eight million in economic value, of which, a couple hundred thousand is one-time contractor stuff. So it's called three point six million will be on Phase One and Two. Job payroll with benefits, every year, for every, everybody, just goes on. It's not a one-time three point six.
So can you elaborate on the jobs, the benefits of the, they have health insurance to their retirement, average pay, are they full-time, are they year-round jobs, are they seasonal jobs, all that?
Absolutely, um, yeah, I was just heading into that. So, but one more point I'd like to make, which I was trying to analogize, like, what would this feel like if, if we're able to do it? And it feels like, you know, a little over seven million, eight million, somewhere in there, something to be moving target on an annual economic impact basis. If I got my, if I did my research correct, about the population of Lake County, that's about a thousand dollars per person, per year, in perpetuity, as long as we're successful. I think that's huge for accounting, when you can do that on a per capita.
What do you say, as long as we are successful? Can you elaborate on that for us?
You can never take for granted that any business will be in business forever. And, you know, if you're paranoid a little bit, and you keep on top of what the market is doing, the technology, you hire great people, like Craig here, and people he's hiring should do okay. But I never take for granted that we're going to open our doors and be successful because of what we do. There are competitors in the world, and the regulatory scheme changes constantly. That's just me hedging my bets. I'd rather, you know, set the bar low, jump over it.
I have another question. I'm pro medical marijuana.
Okay.
As particularly as a alternative to opiate addiction that we have in this area. What uses would your product be targeted for?
Our grow facility would be exclusively, our first license, well, we have three licenses, but the one in particular that's important is, will be a rec license.
Rec reh?
Yeah, so initially, we're starting off with growing for recreational Ws and exporting out of the county. We have no plants, there's no, there really aren't no dispensaries in the county that we know, oh, I know. I know there's a few people thinking about it, they could be customers, but they'd be very small. So almost everything we grow is going to be exported out of the county to where, and where all the dispensaries are. But in terms of medical, people who have medical conditions can buy rec, that doesn't stop them. They just save taxes if they go to a medical dispensary. But if you have specifics about medical, Craig could answer, he's much more in tune to the medical regulations and what that looks like than I.
The recent, I always try to attend different meetings and gain much information. Several years ago, there was a meeting that, it was kind of focused toward medical, but now it's focused on medical recreation, so I just need clarification.
Yeah, and my guess is a lot of people who get medical will just migrate towards recreational. You've seen a lot of medical, unfortunately, a lot of medical dispensaries just disappear. But it's the same product, you can get the same product.
But you will, what you produce will be recreational and medical, will you supply?
We will only be rec initially. Yeah, and that's where the really market is in Oregon, the demand. If we were to come out with, you know, a lot of product in medical, that speaks to the potential failure, but I think it would be rough on everybody.
Ken, may I address that point? The two markets have become one market under the OLCC.
That's right.
And the, the medical market is basically going away. The, it is less than fifteen percent of the dispensaries are medical only. And that, they are mainly producers like us that, that have a vertical integration into their distribution, and they're not taking in other people's products, other medical producers' products. So, uh, basically, everything's under one umbrella now with the OLCC. A medical person goes into a recreational shop, shows them their card, pays no taxes, and actually, a lot of times gets other discounts, and is available to the highest available product, medical products, both CBD and THC, or, or oils available for, you know, all kinds of issues, from cancer to epilepsy to Alzheimer's, you name it. Opioids, all that, and that's all available. So it shouldn't be disguised as, oh, it's recreational. A lot of people, almost all medical patients, go to recreational dispensaries now to get their medicine.
Would you mind sharing your name for the record?
Yes, Craig Compton, General Manager and Vice President of the Lakeview Facility.
Thank you, Craig.
And on this subject, well, I would feel, I do have a niece that uses American marijuana, a pro fact, as a marijuana. So it's personal, too. But on growing recreation, that'd be focused on high THC, and how some of that's on...
I can't remember that completely, actually, that part.
CBD is the second most predominant cannabinoid in cannabis. It's not about the numbers, it's about the quality and the effects that it is derived. High THC is commonly used in medicine, especially in cancer treatments, because it has the ability to kill through apoptosis, it kills cancer cells, quite honestly. And CBD is used more in what you'll see in your documentaries with Dr. Sanjay Gupta and Dr. Oz talk about a lot. CBD is cannabidiol, and it is used in medicines for children, for, you know, anti-seizure, for anti-inflammation, there's, the properties of CBD go on and on, and I encourage everybody to research that for their own personal information.
So back to the notion of the land sale versus the other, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, Commissioner Winter's asked about the job composition, and I think that's one of the biggest, most important parts. So, you know, so with Phase Three, we have about fifteen employees. Majority of those will be, I'm just going to pick a number, because we don't know at this point, forty or forty-five will be permanent. You, you will hear stories about people who grow where populations come in for trimming and they leave. That's, that's a black market phenomenon, which we don't subscribe to. So the way Craig has set up our production schedule is scattering the crops that we plant. So stuff is always coming off the line and available for employees to work on, which means people are permanent employees. Because, one, it's easier, you get more committed, you get more, like, skilled workers over time, they can move up in different job ranks. And there's a different element to a traveling immigrant population, and I'm just talking about immigrant in the sense of moving around for work, not nationality or ethnicity, than it is to say I'm a permanent employee. But back to the question of, of job type. So there'd be about a dozen job types, estimate. Always from the top, at this facility, with Craig running it, in conjunction with Jerry Chen, who's one of the founders. Jerry is focused mostly on making the grows happen, with good quality product that we can sell. And Greg takes almost all of the responsibility, got the last shoulder, for everything else related to management. He makes the train run, which is wonderful. So of those jobs, so you have Craig at the top, and you will have laborers, we'll have five and a half dozen or so laborers, who plant the ground and who pick, and those will be entry-level jobs. But then you can, we have security jobs, we have jobs that are going to be dealing with the clones and, and what they call the monolith plants, and managing that process within the warehouse. We have people who are going to be experts at packaging product for dispensaries. We're going to have people, administrative people, who are going to be reporting against Craig. And we're going to have people who do with the water system, reporting highly sophisticated water system, highly sophisticated, you know, air filtration systems. All this stuff now comes with apps, computer systems, servers, right? Everybody's automated, it's the internet of everything, and you can't get away from it, even if you tried. But one of the, like, more important ones, I think, just to give you an example, which I think is, is a super good example. Craig and Jerry are in conversation, we just received a bid from a company called, excuse me, Helios Spectra out of Sweden, and they're a lighting company, one of the better lighting companies in the world. The Swedes know light. And they created a lighting system that replicates, and Craig's going to, I can see his eyes at the back of my head now, this is my final example, if I get this right, that replicates the sun in terms of the light rays and the colors that come off the sun, that replicates it for the day of the year and the longitude of where you're at on the planet, right? So it's, think of it as a paste manger, clouds come over, and, I'm just going to make this up, because I don't like, I'm not a technician, but, yellow and red light disappears out of the spectrum for our plants, right? And that's important for certain reasons. That kicks in and puts that yellow and red light in. But this means all our greenhouses are wired up with servers and wires, and they are now implementing in North America a technology called Cortex technology, which is, it's both an app and a server-driven software platform, where you program what you want the system to do, days, if not weeks, or longer, in advance. And it will do what you want it to do when the sun doesn't do what it's supposed to do. I mean, I simplified it for my, my purposes, and that's a highly technical job to understand. So many, one or more people are going to be trained in that, right? And this is a national, if not global, technology. This is a job that someone will have who can stay with us over the long term, or take a job someplace else, that, you know, another grower. And it's not just specific, these jobs are not just specific, particularly the water and the lighting jobs are not specific to cannabis, they're specific to agriculture. So somebody could move from, you know, this cannabis operation to something in another state or another part of the world that's growing something else. So these are transferable skills, these are not just jobs where you have this captive, overworked laborer population. And this is high-tech farming and high-tech marketing backed up with sophisticated systems. And this is the money that, you know, my job, the reason I'm not locally in town is it's hard to raise money in town. So I'm in California, and I run a parent company. I spend most of my time having these kinds of discussions and raising capital to get this project off the ground. I would love to do Phase Three, because I think it would shine a very nice light on the kind of, excuse me, Helios Spectra has gone so far, as to say, that the implementation that we want to use, particularly the Cortex technology, ranks up, there is probably the top-tier league of using this technology. And there's a company, which I forget Craig will remember, in Vegas that you visited, that uses this technology. They actually do a promotional video for you and showcase you around the world, as here's how you do it. And we would have it, if we successfully implemented. So it's, it's a good positive light all around, you know, and it's free advertising for us, which, yeah, turns out, so. So does that help with the jobs?
It helps with the number of jobs and all that, I'm just curious.
Oh, and one more, you had other questions, they get health benefits, dental, vision. We're not in a position yet to offer retirement, but someday we hope to, like a 401K or a profit sharing. There will be certain key employees that will get equity participation in some form, you know, whether it's options or, or selling it for them, that shadows that because of the key decision. And that is extra economic, you know, in that that I...
You know, Jerry, and it, to me, is still, I'm going to try and be really honest with you, still not germane, my question to the purchase of the land, but...
Okay.
A few years ago, when Jerry and a few other folks came before, we talked about, because you were describing not being a family, the website, and I have yet to find the website. I find a page that says the Forty Second Group, and you click on one thing and sign up to be a donor, or a...
Just to be get our information, or we'll call you or something, right?
Yeah, something like that, but no, no website yet, is there a reason for that?
Yeah, because we have nothing to show the world yet.
Okay.
We have, we have the Forty Second Group being, and then we have a subsidiary, which will be an Oregon LLC, which has already formed, a gentleman named Jameson, Tony Jameson, not local, I think he was then. We're working through how to create a very professional operating agreement that attracts capital over time. We do, that name of that entity is called High Desert Flower. And we do have that URL reserved, and that URL will be our branding for the new Oregon, High Desert Flower. So once we actually have something to tell the world, we tell them. The worst thing you could do is head fake cannabis industry, that you have something like the music industry or entertainment, and you don't have it, credibility's gone, so. But we will definitely, we'll be there for that, and, you know, feed back them. And Craig has ideas too, which, I don't know if he wants to speak to about, you know, local community education. We can do certificate programs and these lighting systems or the watering systems. So there's knockout effects of this that, you know, raises the visibility of this project and the hidden value.
I'd like, I mean, treat that, the lighting system.
The lighting system?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that could be utilized by private greenhouse vegetable.
Ken, that brings something up about that, we're actually going to be a pilot program. We're going to be the first cannabis grow to use this technology in a greenhouse. They plan on highlighting us in their brochures, in their, in their video programs. You can look up Helios Spectra, they have, the company we visited was The Grove. It's an indoor multi-tier grow facility in Las Vegas. One of the most professional grow facilities I've ever seen, and they're utilizing this technology. And we propose that we bring it to a greenhouse. It is being used around the world currently, cannabis is not legal in Sweden. All the huge applications in Sweden are for other agricultural products, and that's where it's currently being used. So it's absolutely applicable outside of our industry, across the board here. And again, this would be something that, you know, we'd be glad, we'll have tours, we'll, we'll be showcasing this technology and the people who, who can operate it and what we're doing. And, you know, it's something we're, we're glad to offer to the community, that is, um, it's technology that, like Lauren said, someone, the people here in town, kids can apply, coming out of college, anybody can apply, and take this in one of the fastest-growing industries in the country, and these skills can be honed right here in Lakeview.
The reason I kind of bring that up, Lake County is considered as a food desert, meaning, we don't produce a lot of our own food, and everything's shipped in, so forth. And the spent efforts over the years to try to get a commercial greenhouse food, but with nine months of winter, it's kind of hard to do. This would be the lighting system, if you want to say.
Yeah.
So, so I've got a curiosity question before I get to some of my questions on the actual land.
Yeah.
So with your employees, you're saying you have forty-five full-time, roughly?
Estimated, yeah, so we have full options.
So this is just curiosity, your policy and your personnel handbook, do you allow your employees to be under the influence of...
Absolutely not.
So you have a no, you have a no-tolerance policy?
Zero, like any workplace, because this is dangerous equipment, could be dangerous equipment. It's like any, any workplace, we don't want high employees, we don't want drunk employees, we don't want employees on drugs.
If somebody...
We'll shut you down. If somebody's eyes are glazed over.
I'm sure.
It's, it's not different than anybody else. If it's a legal product, you go home, you know, and you, you consume something in your, in your home legally, but you don't bring it to work, you don't show up to work under the influence of alcohol, you don't show up to the influence, under the influence of cannabis. It's just, it's just like any other professional workplace, it's also in compliance with the OLCC and OSHA.
We have a licensing problem.
I have a question on water, right? Do you utilize in town water?
Craig, can you answer that? Craig's a, Craig's a, we got work on a water system.
Waste water?
Yes.
That's been flowing around in the business, right, for a while, particularly over in the valley. How, how are we going to best, Craig's water, he's working on that right now?
Uh, currently, we're, we're working with, uh, is the name slipped me wrong, Jeff possibly here, with water in town, and he's, he's been over a couple of times with Darrell Anderson, and they're actually in designs right now for a wastewater system. We've replaced the waste, uh, the main conduit from the building to the street, which I was informed at one time, when the door factory was in there, was filled with possibly glue, and it was preventing the, the flow from going out, that has been completely excavated and replaced. So as I, as I'm aware right now, we're in compliance, we'll find out, we're ready to submit our new plans. They've just been drawn up, so we're hoping that everything will be in compliance when it's submitted.
How much water would you use? Because water's going to get, be, be short each year, years out.
Currently, our system, right now, we have a forty-five-hundred gallon tank on site, and we estimate about, right now, about five hundred gallons a day for what we have proposed for Phase One. And it would multiply... And it would multiply, phase two would double that, phase three would quadruple that.
And the wastewater, how would you treat that? Would you dispose of it or recycle?
That, right now, we're just, right now, the wastewater is being disposed of through the system. And there's no, we're using a no-till system, so we're not using chemical nutrients or anything at it. We're reusing the soil, we're amending it with all organic product. So, there is absolutely no chemical in any process from seed to sale in our product.
So, onto the land side of it.
Yeah.
Obviously, you weren't informed or haven't researched enough, know that it's annexed into the city at this point, the town of Lakeview.
I have heard that in the past, I was looking for confirmation.
Okay, so, I don't know the town's planning regulations or anything. If it's now right use to put greenhouses up or not within their planning side? So, that's a question you need to find out.
Absolutely.
Before we could even consider it. There's the water, so all that's with the town.
Can I just address that? We've had preliminary conversations, which are possible. That's why I'm considering proposing for the option.
So, that, that's something that you definitely need to know before you, anything could even be considered to be acted on by the county, as far as I'm concerned. Because your proposal is to put greenhouses into industrial areas down there.
Let me ask you, with the option structure though, county would earn a little bit of money, not a lot, Craig, you might cover the legal fees to create the option. But that really puts the risk on us, right? Like if you enter to an option contract and spend money on that, but it's legal, and then the town says, "No, that's the big risk we just took." I mean, it's asymmetrical, right? All the risk is on our side, really not on the county's side. But the county has an exit for property, assuming we put our ducks on our own and get it all done. I just want to point that out, that that's one of the reasons why we get an option.
Okay, then, that's where we come from, that it's your risk, not the county's.
Right, yeah, we're, yeah. It's a lot of risk for phase three, but, you know, if phase one and two goes inspected, which they look like they are, the risk gets made there.
So, Mr. Chairman, I did receive three different phone calls today. I don't know if there's more presentation or whatever, but I do need to bring that forward at some time within the meeting.
Sure, and I, well, we all received an email shortly before the meeting. And we have people here in the community.
Well, if Lauren's done with his presentation.
I'm done with preparing remarks.
Okay.
I mean, just sit here and.
Where are you, if you're comfortable there?
I'm sure there'll probably be people in the audience, probably have something to say, but. And I believe, just for the record, the people that got a hold of me, I said I would definitely bring him to the record, one that's said with this. But the first one was Teresa Decker, which has sent an email. I believe everybody's received it in opposition of it. I'm not gonna read the whole email, if you'd like to have it read.
No, that's fine.
And in opposition, several different things have stated in there. One that she really drove forward is sixty-plus percent of Lake County voted against marijuana twice, is the way she verbalized, I don't know if it's actually written in there in that way. Lori Albertson, which is sitting here, I won't speak for her, she'll get a chance to speak in opposition. And then just before I came in, Stacy Hubble, that lives down in that area, wanted to be on record that she's in opposition also. So, I just wanted to record to reflect the phone calls that I received this morning.
For clarification, the county permits prohibits that your activities come out of that way.
And I'm happy to take questions from the community. I have some comments on that, but I'm not sure it's appropriate or I should say.
Another question, smell.
Right.
We have prevailing South, South, West, and North, how would you promote?
We are spending a lot of time and energy and mind figuring that out. And the technicalities, I mean, I'll defer to Craig again, he's on-site and responsible. But we are multiple filtering systems, both out of greenhouses, out of containers, and out of blue building. There's carbon filters, we're doing everything we can to reduce it, if not eliminate it. Can't eliminate everything. You can hope that there's enough oxygen in the air, the air, you know, dilutive. We know there's probably some illegal grows around, you know, we're all aware of. And we don't smell those, so, but those are probably not on the scale that we're contemplating. So, I understand the smell. Craig, did you want to add anything about it?
I think the most commonly understood way is there was a gel, there's a big back wall of swamp coolers that we're using that face exiting the direction you're indicating. And there's actually a gel that covers the smell that we'll be applying regularly. And that's the main way right there, coming out of the greenhouses. Because obviously, if the roof is open, you know, it's hard, I mean, there's a filtration system in both the tanks, fans, filters, but with an open roof during a harvest season, there's gonna be some escaping through the top. We're doing everything we can to filter that before it ever gets to that stage. Everything inside will be put through multiple carbon filters, both from the container and then before they exit the air again, so they're scrubbed twice. The air in my house isn't that clean.
Okay, so, we're to the next phase of this. I'm not gonna put any of our public on the spot, but I'm gonna allow them the opportunity to share any thoughts that they may have that they'd like to. Mary?
Love to. Do we come up or stay here?
You stay there.
Yeah.
Just give the name for the record.
Mary Stewart. You know, most of you know us, we've lived here all our lives, raised our family here. And very involved. We've kept foster children our own for ten years. I've been really involved in a restoration program that does six months out of the year. We're trying to restore lives, hurting lives, hurting families, hurting children that are affected by addictions. And I think addiction is a big problem in our area. And so, I guess I would really like to make a plea with you commissioners that if there's any way we could not be a part of producing anything else like that for people, I would like to see you do that. I feel like it's really important that you consider people before, I think, people's lives are more important than how much money this ring is. So, that's my plea, and, yeah, that's all I've got to say, but I think it's important.
Thank you, Mary.
I gotta commit, so I'm leaving. But thank you for letting me have my say.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Gerald Stewart. And a couple of things that I would like to address. One, we already have, is that it is the will of your constituents that we not pursue the marijuana aspect within our county. The other part that I look at is, and we're talking about workforce. If you look at our workforce here, there are a lot of jobs that we're trying to obtain, but people can't get them because they cannot pass the drug test. So, here we are, being counterproductive against your own, and this would be Lake County's, the hospital district, which I'm familiar with, if you look at that. If they don't pass the drug test in six months before they can apply again. So, what we're producing and they're trying to do is counterproductive. We talk about the financial aspect, the three-point-six billion dollars. What you don't look at is the detrimental side. And you guys have been involved with behavioral health. What is happening to society as a result of use of the addictive drugs. And they are addictive. I spoke with a counselor in another county yesterday. What the youth don't realize, they're not dealing with the marijuana that their parents did. It's a much stronger, more addictive aspect than they've been used to. The other part would be the children. Having seventeen grandchildren, I was reading some statistics and it states that they are, let me get to that part, I just want to make sure that I have my information correct, that they are more affected that if the children use, the youth, here it is. If marijuana is used regularly before the age of eighteen, research shows that the IQ drops by eight points at age thirty-eight. So, I, I mean, it's no surprise that it's a mind-altering drug. And I think that we're sending the wrong message to our youth, to our community, if we try to promote. Getting back to the land sale, and then I'll let somebody else have a turn. What we're doing is we're listening to all this, but we're really, we haven't seen anything yet. And I, I see something going up down there, but I, I haven't seen forty-five full-time jobs. I haven't seen any of this. So, maybe at some point in the future, maybe five years from now, when there is that need to grow, they could come back and resubmit. But I think you would not be serving the county in the best interest if you said yes to something that, a phase three, when we don't see phase one and two to completion yet. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Gerald.
I'm Gigi Outland. And I'm listening to the same things, all the economic development and everything. But there's some moral issues here too. They're not gonna sell in Lake County. They're transferring the problem elsewhere. And I don't think we want to be a county that promotes that, that says to our kids, "Oh, it's okay to sell here, but we're not gonna use it, we're gonna sell it somewhere else." You know, I mean, sometimes that's some questions you need to ask yourself. Do you really want to promote that? When basically the county said no, the whole Lake County said no. Because it's the product they're selling, you know?
Thank you, G. I think, and I appreciate everything Mr. Stewart had to say. And I agree with everything they had to say about children and people under age consuming. And I, I agree with all that. And that's why the consumption age is twenty-one in Oregon. I also agree that, I believe that alcohol and tobacco are actually worse drugs. I don't believe that our product should be called a problem. Because this hospital right here is filled with people with diseases created by alcohol, tobacco, food. I challenge anyone to find one person in that hospital that's infirmed right now due to a cannabis-related problem, just saying. But going forward.
I'd just like to pass this around, this is on the hospital.
Thank you for your, thank you for your interrupting me, sir.
I'm sorry.
As I, yeah, sure. That's propaganda, by the way, what it's passing around. That should be taken down from inside the hospital because the information is misleading and prejudiced, just saying. But I do think that it has to be handled as a legal product. The state of Oregon has voted it as so. We're not proposing to sell it or consume it here. We're not applying for dispensary license, we're applying for a production license. The state of Oregon said that's okay. And as far as all the other concerns, I, I agree. I have grandchildren, I don't want them exposed to it, just like, I don't want them exposed to alcohol or pornography or any of the other things that are a problem in our society today. I want this, this is an adult decision. It has proven to be a medicine that works for people, that is an alternative to.
I've seen this at a hospital, yes.
It's an alternative to the hard drugs and pharmaceuticals that are killing people on a daily basis. And that's my statement.
And that's great. I don't know, do we have any other of our public that wanted to say anything additional? Yes, sir?
No, I'm John Hanson. I would just say that in view of how things have gone in Colorado and other states that allowed this to happen, the traffic accidents are skyrocketing. They, it's a very difficult thing to police, whether it's an adult or a young person that's using and getting out there and driving. It's way worse to police that than it is alcohol. And it stays in your system a lot longer. And so, I think, and in Lakeview, you're gonna have to bring in people to staff your facility because I doubt that you can find that many local people that are gonna be able to do anything down there. It's, it's a real problem, having worked in the, in the door industry, I used to work in that building. And it's gonna be tough to find people. So, you're gonna have to work on that aspect of it, especially if they have to pass the drug test before.
What I'd like to add, you know, I'm sympathetic to whatever he's saying. I'm not a cannabis user myself, so, you know, hopefully that helps.
Well, I think that, I think that the, you know, what you're looking at is great. And if we could kind of pare that down to where we could use it for the good aspects, but I don't think it's worth delving into all the negative aspects of it just for that. I think, yes, there are, there's no doubt some good benefits to it. But the negative part just really outweighs that for me. That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you. Yes?
My name's Lori Albertson, and I live across the street, across the field. And I do oppose selling those extra lots to move it closer to my house. I just feel that it's going to devalue my property when I want to sell. Eventually, I do want to sell my property, but, I mean, I don't know a lot about this, it's interesting to me, but who wants to buy a house next to a pot plant? I mean, I don't really, but I'd be interested in learning more about it.
You're welcome to come over for a visit.
I can walk across the street and come knock on the door, and you guys will teach me more about it.
Yeah, but it's not that simple because of the OLCC, maybe we have to register visitors and all that. Craig can do that, but you're totally welcome to come over and see what we do. And we'll answer everyone's questions. Can I just add one comment?
Yeah.
Wouldn't it just be helpful? There are new studies that came out, and Craig's probably aware of these too, because he's really into studies, that when cannabis is legalized, and one of us, remember, we're not selling locally, so we're not conjuring to any local problem. Minor use doesn't increase. They get it anyways. You know, there's so much cannabis out there that they get it on the black market, and if legal comes in, and somehow they end up as a legal product, it's black cannabis that goes away. So, one you didn't remember. The two, the actual overall use of minor use does not go up. And that's a call I'll post, most recent. I just wanted to put that out there as current.
My, my other comment is, how far is that facility from the new Head Start building that was just opened down there? Do you know that? I think it's quite a deal.
I'm not versed on the laws, John.
Yeah.
It's less than a thousand feet, but there's laws, they're not gonna be a dispensary. And I think that the laws may cover dispensary and do that. So, I think technically, they're able to do that. Obviously, they are, because they have a license. So, that, I've had a lot of people ask me that. I have been and absolutely researched that. But that's my rough understanding, not positive. Guys in the know here should be able to answer that question.
You're, you're right, yes. Dispensers are the big issues, like liquor stores.
And we, we had a, I had a dispensary that I ran in Shaven Cove for a year and a half. Ironically enough, we had a school bus stop in our dispensary parking lot. In eighteen months, there was not one issue with a child, there was not one issue with a patron, there was not one issue with a parent, or was, there was not one interaction with an official over any kind of problem. And I thought it was absurd, and I was running, I was like, "Really? A school bus stop here in our dispensary parking lot?" But we had the biggest parking lot, and that's where people could come and pick up their kids. And it went on for a year and a half without ever one incident. And no kid ever tried to come into the dispensary, and nobody ever tried to sell something to a kid. It, it really made me feel good, because I was worried about something that I'm sure everybody not in the industry was worried about at an elevated level. And I was like, "This is kind of crazy." And nothing ever happened. And I was just so relieved at that, that it operated just like the little seven-eleven next door and like tire replacement store next door. It just never became an issue. So, and we're, we are about a block and a half from the Head Start program. And, you know, obviously, we. you know, obviously, we have no intentions on having any kind of demonstrations, we're very low-key, we don't have any signs, there's no insignias, there's nothing, we're not trying to, um, you know, take over advertising in town or anything. Matter of fact, we're, we're trying, we don't have even insignia shirts, because we just want to operate our business and provide jobs, and, you know, I, I think, very similar, we have to be viewed to the wine industry, and, uh, you know, they're creating a product, and I'm not sure, you know, the doctors say a glass of wine a night is good for you. Okay, well, there's a lot of things that cannabis is good for as well, and it's being proven every day. I'm not saying it's all being used for that, but I know not all alcohol is being used for one glass of wine a day as well.
So, I'd like, personally, I'd like to bring this back to the reason we're here, whereas the discussion on the land itself...
Right.
That the county owns, and whether or not we, as a board representing our constituents, have to sell that piece of land. So, for me, and I'm just one commissioner, it's been pretty simple all along in this process. I'm not going to talk about the pros or the cons, I don't think that has any value for me and the decision space that I've been given on this request, but it's been, it's been bannered about as far as the percentage of people, and, you know, it's legal, marijuana's legal in the state of Oregon, and we all know that. So, in Lake County, sixty-two percent of the citizens, when it was put to a vote, because this was board decided to do it that way as opposed to as that the town did with its vote of just the council to represent their constituents, we wanted, we thought it was a big enough issue, we wanted to go out to our constituents. And in doing so, that sixty-two percent voted in opposition to this, and that was outside of the incorporated limits of Lakeview and Paisley. Paisley, the city of Paisley, the town of Lakeview, could make their own decision on that, and they, they were allowing that. So, we talked about this annexed piece of property that's now going to come under town jurisdiction, so I went back and took a look at how did our town citizens that didn't get to vote on it, as far as the legalization or the passing of these different, uh, parts of marijuana production and sale, how did they vote on it, on the county-wide vote? And they voted in opposition to it as well, fifty-eight percent to forty-two percent. For me, and I just, I'm going to boil it down to the least common denominator, the smallest number, fractional number, they've given me my marching orders, I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, Dan, for representing us.
At the discussion, we do have it on the agenda tomorrow, as I said, I'm only one, there's three of us, so.
Interesting. Appreciate your team, by the way.
And if we did sell it, you know, sell to the town, whether they wanted to progress, correct?
Primarily, it looks like they would, because they're already involved with us anyways, so this just expands, it's already there. This is not a new use for the town. This is a bigger use of, 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 I think, this, yes, sir.
So, if...
Well, I, you, uh, you were, I do have to go back to some of the discussion, because of, um, I do get caught up in some of that, and I, it's interesting for people to acknowledge that it's a problem for the youth. Everybody here says it's a problem for the youth, and they're getting it anyways. Unacceptable, unacceptable to have that kind of thought, while the youth are getting it anyways. We have a problem in society if we have that mentality. I don't agree with that statement, no how, no way.
Well, that's the reclamation of the black market, you know, what people want.
I tell you, when there are argument legal, it's pretty easy for any youth to build marijuana. I drink, first time I drink, you steal it from your parents, most people do. And now, since it's become so readily accessible to our youth, and then they said in the meeting in here, well, they're going to get it anyways, that really goes against me. I, I don't agree with that at all.
Can I add to my statement?
I, I do, let me finish. I, I need to get that statement out there, because I just don't agree with that statement, period. I will listen to my constituents all, and that's the reason why this board put it out, and, uh, that's where I intend to be also. It can be moved forward tomorrow, but I'm going to go ahead and state where I'm at today. It's not ready to be brought forward tomorrow, even if we're just going through the normal cross, process. You guys have not fulfilled your duty to check with the town to even find out if it's legal to have greenhouses by the city ordinances, the city planning rules and all that at this point. You're trying to lock up a piece of property for the what-ifs, which would then tie the county's opportunity to sell that to anybody else, because it's tied up for the what-ifs. I would much rather for it to come in and say, this is what the rules are, this is what it is, right on down the line. So, that, that's a bit of a struggle for me to just lock it up for a what-if, and we, and we will and do those things on occasion, but I think there's opportunity to figure out some of the what-ifs before you come before the public meeting and say, this is where it's at, this is what we've done. We have all our ducks in a row. I don't think that you've really done that, myself.
Can I add?
Yes, absolutely.
You know, and this is not an argument, a statement, and, and from my passion. It's, it's a sort of a chicken and egg, the chicken and egg situation, to use that question, with, with Lakeside. So, like, well, do you have the land? No, we don't have a land, we're, we're trying to option the land. Well, then I say, well, if we were to be able to get control of the land, where would you be predisposed? We'd be predisposed to support you. So, that's the best I get on both sides. So, you know, at some point, I got to get one side to commit to something, so it's like making a movie. You get the star, and then you can get the money, you can get the producer, it's, it's the same scenario. So, my problem, not your problem, because you both have the same position, you know, showing. Um, and the second thing is, one thing I learned in life, and I'm not a cannabis user at all, you know, I've tried it, I was published, you've been started, it's not my thing, and I'm just like, I don't drink, I'm the same thing, you know, most people in society drink. And I try to deal with society as it is, not the way I wanted to be, right? And me, as Lauren, as a little person, is not going to change the world of cannabis. In fact, I was going to vote no for Proposition Sixty-four in California, I was so neutral on that, I didn't even care, because I had used cannabis. And then I started to learn more about it, I did consulting, uh, time track with this company, and I started to see the positives of how the world is. Uh, so, if you think about how the world is, you take the opportunity of how the world is to make it better, to say, people steal their alcohol from their parents is true, and people will steal, kids will steal their pot from their parents, that's a parental issue, it's not a societal issue. What can we do in the industry to help the parents protect their product, so it doesn't happen? The alcoholic, the alcoholic doesn't want to do that, because they need consumers in the future, right? So, anyways, I just wanted to lay that out, but that's the way I approach the world.
We, we all know alcohol's bad, we spend billions of dollars...
Same as you, right?
Absolutely. So, why does one more bad make it good?
Amen.
Amen.
Yes, yes.
We know all those things are bad for us. You just talked about our hospitals and all this stuff, we know the bad, why add to society?
It's here that the issue is how, how to make it better, and say, that's my goal.
On the, on the medical...
I'm just sharing your own habits.
On the medical side of it, I believe there's some benefits. You're going into recreational side of it, and...
In Oregon, the medical side is getting the product, and there is no medical side in Oregon anymore, so.
So, one more question, Mr. Chairman, if you would.
I appreciate all the comments, Mike.
Why would you want to be in the community that has voted on Sixty-two, which has forced the drive to come to the community that constituents of the, of the county said no? Why, what, what's attractive to come to the county and go against the constituents of the county? What drives you to want to be there?
Well, a lot of me have people in the company, including one of the founders who lives here, calls this home. Two, we want to be, as a company, as long as we're here, responsible. Three, we are totally open to hearing from the community, what do we need to do to make you comfortable with this as a business? Because whether it happens in this year, or two years, or five years, it'll probably happen at some point, because politics is the nature of change in governance. So, what can we do to be the best corporate citizen, to do it right the first time out versus in desperation, or some other, it's, there's different commissioners up here, different people in the audience, and they sweep in something that doesn't work for anybody in the law, and that's our obligation. So, I'll just leave it at that, I'll just close on that.
Okay. I'll go back to my support for medical, I think everybody supports that.
Yeah.
On the kids, that's a very...
Powerful.
Powerful to make, right?
Because you're a person.
I mean, I've got my kids also. Uh, the education aspect, for the promotion of use is, well, no, I still have concerns about kids. Marijuana has been legalized in multiple European countries. We have statistics on that. I have done a study in the American part, and now I've read up on a train of facts. Basically, there's no change from legalized to...
Right, right.
But the kids is always an issue for us, but education and promotion of use is also...
The thing about a legal market is you, you're able to test the product, and pesticide pre- again versus otherwise, and, you know, white compound problems, you concentrate pesticides in somebody's body, which seems to be another medical condition, not, that's a voluntary, they take it on, right? You just want them to take that on, if you say, well, the black market, we're not...
So, we still get, sort of, selling out, or, so there are business and everything, I mean, it's out there, but still.
So, the, the question before us, once again, I'll state it again, was whether or not we would entertain, uh, this lease option proposal...
Purchase option.
Purchase option, proposal, uh, two acres in Lake County, and it is on the agenda tomorrow. You've heard the voices, because we will leave it on the agenda tomorrow, it's listed under action and consideration, and, uh, we'll, we'll take that up at that time. We appreciate you coming, Lauren, today, and Craig, we appreciate your input, and our citizens, we really appreciate your input as well, and, uh, at this time, I'd like to propose we move on with our agenda.
Thanks, officer.
Thank you. Sure, we'll take about a five, or six, or seven, so, may we just...